The Muscatine City Council will come to order. Fran, would you do a roll call, please?
I'm Raywall.
Here.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Mathick.
Present.
Bayham.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Six present and one absent, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you, Fran. Folks, would you rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Part of my job as mayor of the city of Muscatine is to recognize people, whether they be city employees or regular citizens, for doing outstanding things. And tonight is no exception. We have an individual with us tonight, in addition to the Muscatine Police Department, that has done something outstanding, extraordinary people doing extraordinary things. Allow me to read. "On June 25, 2014, Officer Danielle Reisbeck was dispatched to a residence in reference to child endangerment. While investigating this incident, Officer Reisbeck observed an 18-month-old child choking. Officer Danielle Reisbeck took the child and delivered a series of back blows to dislodge the styrofoam out of the child's mouth. Officer Danielle Reisbeck's quick response and actions saved the child's life." Officer Reisbeck, could you come forward, please? And we're not done.
Thank you.
Please parade in front of council so that they can...
Thank you very much.
Oh, I gotta shake your hand.
Yes, you do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Excuse me for not standing.
That's okay. Great job, Danielle. Thank you.
I guess the Muscatine Police Department is dismissed. We are on item number four. And item 4B is an introduction by Chuck Van Hic of the new CBB coordinator. Hi, Chuck, and welcome.
I do. Mayor and council, I here as the chairman of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And in August, we had an opening for our director. And I can report to you that we had a very large number of applicants, and we had six very qualified applicants, which is something that three years ago, we were scrambling to have, and we're very proud that we had that list of candidates. Our committee had a very difficult choice, but they decided on Nick Kusik, who I'll bring up here in a minute. Nick, in August, was the sports editor of the Muscatine Journal. And prior to that, he came to Muscatine in 2010 as just a sports writer. And when Matt Cosse moved to the Quad Cities, he was elevated. He also was the editor of the leisure page at that time, so had double duty. He is, I say, he will give his background and talk a little bit about the three months that he's been our director. And one of the things that he will talk about is that, and we hope we had some quite a bit of that to do with this, last year was a record year for the hotel motel tax, as you probably know. And we are very happy about that. We know that it takes a lot of people to get that done. And we will continue to work and improve on that with some of, with other priorities, which he'll talk about. So Nick, come on up and talk about your background and three months in office, and thanks for taking the job.
Thanks, Chuck. Thank you, members of city council, for letting me introduce myself today.
A little louder, Nick.
Thank you for, maybe I can tilt this a little further. allowing me to be here to introduce myself today. Like Chuck mentioned, my name is Nick Kusik. I've been, actually been Muscatine only since 2012, but came at that time as a sports writer to start. Eight months spent doing that before I was promoted to sports editor. And then this, within this year, also took on additional duties as our features editor, doing many other feature pages before this opportunity opened up. Reason I decided that this was for me was, I think it'll be a great opportunity, and already has been, to use a little more of my educational background, which includes a major from Winona State University in mass communication, emphasis in journalism, obviously that makes sense, and then minored in adventure tourism, which included learning all about tourism, not just the adventure stuff. So that's why I thought this made sense for me. Chuck mentioned it was exciting news when I first got here. You know, it was a great starting point, although I had nothing to do with it. Hotel motel tax had a record fiscal year for 2014, $415,041.27. That was...2008 was the closest total of that. It was, 2014 beat 2008 by 40, or within the last 10 fiscal years, it was the closest since 2008. 2008, $366,524.28. So that, by nearly $50,000, the hotel motel tax was a record. So we hope that that's a direct reflection of the larger investment into the CBB to be a driver of this, you know, economic aspect in tourism and travel. And I hope, I hope that I can do the job to be the one to continue to do that. Some things that I've started here since I've come on board, we've been in the process now with our marketing committee revising our strategic annual marketing plan. They want me to make sure that it's my own and that I have my stamp on it. So we've been going through that process, and we hope to have that finalized here shortly. And then another big thing we're trying to do is rekindle our hospitality meetings, which include all different types of members of the hospitality industry. And that way, we can connect with them, give them updates on what we're doing, and in particular with the lodging, make sure they understand that although they have no choice with that tax, that they can see it as an investment, and that we're trying to, you know, bring visitors in and put them in their hotels and motels and bed and breakfast. Another great highlight, September was the highest amount of visits to our website. Our website's still fairly new, which you probably know, so I think that'll just continue to grow and grow with its existence as more people discover it. And I think that's all I have for kind of highlights. Any questions for me as I continue to get my feet wet here? Don't think so.
I guess not, Nick.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, Chuck.
Bring more good news in the future here. Good.
Okay, we're still on item four. Item 4C is an appeal by David and Bonnie Tate of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section One of the city code pertaining to nuisance abatement. David, just so you know, you're on the clock, five minutes.
First, I'd like to thank the city council for hearing my appeal, and that I have nothing against the city code, and I've never failed to comply with any notice that I have received. I am appealing, the only reason I am appealing this is because I feel it's being used by a spiteful neighbor to exact revenge using the building and zoning department. The only thing I have left in my yard, as far as any type of overgrowth or whatever, is the last of my garden, and as soon as the first frost hits, that'll all get cleared out and pull my fences down. I got temporary chicken wire up to keep the rabbits out, because there's a lot of rabbits in my neighborhood. So that's really all I've got to say. So anybody has any problems or questions?
Any questions, council, for David?
The other, we saw some pictures, Mr. Mayor. Have the other items in those pictures been removed?
No, they have not. Those are pretty recent pictures.
We have Grant Pickering here tonight. If there's any questions for Grant, Grant's in charge of this process.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And to close out, item four, if there is anyone in council chambers that has an issue that they'd like to discuss with council that is not included on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to come to the podium. Very good. Let's move along. Consent agenda, item five. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member's or requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items 6A through B, items 8A through E, item 9A through B, filing of communications, which is 12A through F, and tonight's bills totaling $1,967,990.11? This whole move, yeah? Bob?
Second.
Second. Tom? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries six zero. Dropping down to item seven, public hearing. This public hearing concerns the proposed intent to acquire or condemn, if necessary, all or a portion of property or an interest in property for the public involvement improvement for the city of Muscatine's landfill project. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment. If there was anyone in council chambers that wishes to speak to this? Very good. Please tell us your name and address, sir.
My name is Lyndal Winter. This is my wife Nancy. We're the owners of this land that you would like to acquire. I guess I'll start with, a few months ago, I got a call from the Iowa DNR wondering why I would not negotiate an easement for you to put two permanent test wells on my property. And at that time, I had no idea that you needed to put two test wells on my property, and I told them I wouldn't have a problem with the easement. So in further discussions, we found out a lot of other stuff that was not coming to the surface. I told them that I had no problem with an easement, and I asked them, what does the landfills in Iowa get for these easements and things? They told me the average was about $1,000 a well on an annual basis. And I says, well, what's these test wells usually cost to build? He says, well, most of the other landfills are putting them in for $3,000 to $5,000, depending on depth and what they need to have special for them. So I guess I have a problem is that the city never come to me, never talked to me. Now they want to condemn and take my property, the notice I got from your lawyers, because we had made mention to them that we would sit down and negotiate an easement. We get a letter back from them, an easement is not needed because we're going to condemn and take the property. You've done that once before, you lost in court, it costs the city bunches of money. And I think Phil was on the board at that time, and he knows. And I'm not backing down. My property wasn't for sale, and it isn't for sale. Now, if we got a problem, I'm neighborly, and I'll work with you. But for $10,000, you could probably take care of your problem, which came in about six years ago. Four years ago, the law was you're supposed to have this test wells put in and taken care of. Two years ago, your staff came to me, we negotiated, they drilled 10 test wells on my property to see how far your contaminations migrated onto my property. Your landfill is leaking high levels of poisons onto our waters and our lands. And that's the only reason they want to take this property, not for need of expansion or anything, it's because your landfill is leaking. And all you need is two test wells put in, and for $10,000 or so, you could get it done. But for six years, your staff's put it off, he-hawed around, pissed around, and making our waters and our land contaminated. So the DNR does not understand why they're taking this action to condemn our property, and it's going to cost you a lot more than $10,000 to see if your problem is still there. That's all these test wells are going to do, is see how far your contaminations migrated. Is it getting stronger? Is it getting weaker? Is it mild and staying in its testing that it has? So as a taxpayer of Muscatine, I would be wondering why you want to throw so much money away and look at more litigation and go into court again? Because this time, instead of going against you for being a nuisance, it's going to be because you're contaminating my waters and my land. And I will be neighborly and work with you. There's no problem. I told Laura, when she come out to talk to me about some of these problems and called me, the past is the past, but let's be neighborly and work this out. But it doesn't seem like the city wants to. I'm always fighting problems out there, and I guess the solution is to take more of my land like you did before. If that's what's needed, I have discussed it with my lawyers, I will file a lawsuit against the city again, and I'll fight it to the end like I did before. Last time the city, I understood, sold bonds to pay me. This time, you're going to have to sell a lot more in bonds, probably, because if it comes to that, I'm willing to fight it in court. Otherwise, we can be neighborly and work this out civilized, and save you money, and take care of the problem the DNR wants you to take care of. I have here, and my wife will hand it out, I have the current administrative order against the city. I don't know how many of her were that they're looking at fining you more money. Some of the fines could be $5,000 a day, because your staff is dragging their feet of taking care of this problem. There is a flash drive, you can hook it to your computers, it's a complete file of the DNR. There are his addresses with the emails and stuff that you can get ahold of the DNR if you'd rather not use the flash drive. There is reports of all the chemicals. We had a chemist go through and highlight everything of the high levels of contamination that is in our waters out there. You expect us to drink it, not knowing what's going on? Our animals are out there? You know, there's a problem. And like I said, I'm a neighbor, and I'll work with you, but if you don't, I'll be in court fighting you. So, you know, we would like you to really examine what's going on here before you make a decision tonight. I do have to report back to the DNR and my lawyers tomorrow whether we file suit, and they want to know what your decisions are, because they don't understand why the city would want to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars when they could spend $10,000 and just start monitoring these wells to see what is going on in our water tables and stuff. So if there's any questions, I can answer while I'm here, I will. But I'd like to be neighborly and work this out instead of have to go to court again. So...
Counsel?
This is all from DNR?
That's all from the DNR. There's addresses, reports, and you can pull it up on your zip drive, it's some of the same stuff. Otherwise, you can go online, and if you feel you've got questions, you can call the Iowa DNR. The legal department will talk to you, and the head of the landfills will talk to you. But they just don't understand why you would want to acquire or condemn and take this property when the whole time, we could have worked together and had this problem solved years ago for minimum dollars. So...
One other question. Do you have any copies of, do you have any copies of paperwork that you've received from the city?
I don't have anything from the city. I have one paper, I don't have it with me, but it didn't come from the city, it come from the city's lawyer, where they're requesting, they made an offer to me to purchase the land, and I said it wasn't for sale. And my lawyers responded back to your city lawyers out of Des Moines, and they made a couple, I don't know if it was phone calls through paper, mail, whatever, but they had exchanged a few things, like I said, where we would accept working and negotiating with yous. And then the next response was that it was not needed because you're planning on condemning and taking some more of my land.
Good. Thank you.
Counsel, any other discussion on this issue?
Couple of quick comments, Your Honor, if I might.
Greg?
Just a reminder that regarding communication, the city was directed to communicate with the, with Mr. Winter's attorney and not directly with Mr. Winter's on this issue. So all further communication after the initial letter was funneled through the attorney, both our attorney and the winner's attorneys. Couple of things, this is not just about potential remediation down the road. This is an issue about creating a buffer zone, dealing with the waste boundary, and again, determining if there's future or potential remediation necessary down the road. All along, the city has indicated that the fence line that's currently in place is not going to change. A permanent easement would be maintained for the winners to utilize the property and continue to access the back portion of the property as they have always done so. There's no plans to change the fence line as part of this process. If the council has any legal questions tonight, we have, the council's dealt mainly with Matt Brick, with Brick Gentry Law Firm in the past. However, tonight, we have Pat Burke. Pat's the attorney that's with Brick Gentry Law Firm that's been on this from the beginning, essentially. And if you have any questions, Pat's here tonight to answer any questions from the council.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, counsel, I need, I need a motion to close.
Move to close.
Tom, in a second?
Second, sir.
Second. Bob? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion carries six zero. Down to item 11 from the city administrator. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the process for negotiation and condemnation for the city of Muscatine sanitary landfill project. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted? Osama. In a second?
Second.
Tom, any discussion?
Are we going to go into closed session for any discussion of this tonight?
We were planning on it tonight. It's not on the agenda. We've discussed it some closed session prior to tonight. Is there a need to?
I guess I'm not as, I'm not as comfortable with, I mean, I obviously haven't had an opportunity to review this. And I guess I have some questions that I think need to be answered, and I think closed session would probably be appropriate, because either that or, you know, I would enter, and I'm not moving to table, but I would, I would if the rest of council was, thought it was necessary at this point.
Pat, there's no closed session on the agenda tonight? Any issue going into closed session?
I don't think so. I'm under a threat of litigation.
Do you like to just... Do that now or table this item? Well, I guess we could, we could table this item until after the closed session, could we not?
Or table it until the first meeting in November?
If necessary.
Is there an urgent urgency with this action? If it's anything like the last time with, the only, there's only been, that I can remember, now I could be wrong, but it seems like there's only been one condemnation that we've ever done since I've been on council. And I don't take that lightly, condemning somebody's property. I guess I'd like to make sure that everybody's on board and still on board with all the information at hand, and I need the opportunity to take a look at it. So I guess I would, I would entertain tabling it until the first meeting in November.
If there's...
Go ahead.
If there's, is there a reason to do it now, or we could wait till after the closed session, determine if it's necessary?
Good, but it's hard to read.
Counsel's already given us direction on this particular case.
Yeah, I know. I know, I'm very aware of that. So I'd move the table until November, first meeting in November, what did that be, the sixth? Because the fourth is, yeah, Tuesday.
Okay, that's a motion. Now we have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mike? And I believe this will be a roll call. Beginning with Phil.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Nay.
Net?
Nay.
Osama?
Nay.
Okay, let's go back to the original motion, which was, the motion was made by Osama, second by Tom. And this also is a roll call, unless there's any other discussion. So let's begin with Tom, or I'm sorry, Osama.
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Net?
Aye.
Bob?
Nay.
And Osama, or I counted you.
He gets to vote twice. Get a vote for Scott, right?
Yeah.
We are in Iowa. I've gotten voted once.
Okay, let's move along to item B presented...
We need the roll call.
How much was, what was the count?
Four to two.
Four to two.
Yes.
Quick question, Mr. Mayor. This administrative consent order, I can't find a date on this anywhere.
It's in action right now. It's in action right now? You got it from the Iowa DNR?
I see. Not issued yet. Okay, thank you. That's why there's no date.
Okay, now shall we move along to item B? Okay, now shall we move along to item B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting the completed work for the Cedar Street Water Adjustment Project and authorizing final payment. The city entered into an agreement for this project with Salzburger Escavating in the amount of $69,587. No change orders were necessary. Quantity adjustments decreased, decreased the contract amount by $3,317.80 for a final contract amount of $66,269.20. It is staff's recommendation the work be accepted and final payment be made to the contractor. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama?
Second.
Jeanette, any discussion? A roll call, beginning with Osama.
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries, six to zero. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution awarding and approving the contract for the Geneva Creek Channel Shaping Project. Let me say that again, Geneva Creek Channel Shaping Project. Two bids were received for this project with a low bid from Salzburger Escavating in the amount of $48,963. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Phil, any discussion? Beginning with Tom, a roll call.
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mike?
Aye.
Motion carries, six to zero. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to enter into a lease agreement with the Canadian Pacific Railroad to lease a partial of abandoned rail spur west of Hauser Street near the entrance to Kent Stein Park for the Musser Park to Wiggins Road Trail. This lease area allows access across the Muscatine Slough using the abandoned railroad bridge to the northeast corner of the transfer station property. The tail alignment would, would then loop around the transfer station approximately one mile. Terms of the lease are ten-year for $2,000, total renewable for ten-year periods thereafter. Cost to purchase property would be significantly greater. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted? I'm sorry, this is a request. Is there a motion to adopt the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom, and a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Phil, any discussion? Opposed in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries, six to zero. Item E. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to issue a purchase order for refuse collection dumpsters. Two bids were received for this, for this purchase with a low, low bid from Gregory Container in Cahoka, Missouri. It is staff's recommendation a purchase order be issued to Gregory Container for five, two-yard dumpsters at $400 each, ten three-yard dumpsters at $665 each, and two four-yard dumpsters at $1,418 each for a total cost of $9,978. There is $10,000 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to adopt, to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Bob, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, six to zero. Item F, pardon me. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the purchase of a distillation unit for the Water Pollution Control Plant's lab annex project. Three bids were received for this project with the lowest responsible bid from S C P Science for an S C P Digiprep 300 distillation unit in the amount of $8,017. There is $7,500 budgeted for this unit. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette, and a second?
Second.
Second, Mike, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposed, nay? I'm assuming that's a six to zero, I didn't hear much from this side of the chamber over here.
Sorry.
Okay, moving right along, counsel, it's time for communications, and that would be from council members, beginning with Councilman Graywall.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
And Phil?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Osama?
I have nothing, thank you.
Bob?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Jeanette?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Tom?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Okay, Fran?
Yes, I would like to make an announcement for Trick or Treat Night, I know that Tom spread and brought it up today. For those that are in the listening audience, Trick or Treat Night is going to be October 31st from 5:30 to 7:30 P M.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Fran. Greg?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
And I have nothing, any other business, counsel? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
He needs a adjourn.